Everyone's on vacation, so it keeps getting, it's like, oh, what's next? We failed only and it's right in the middle.
Well, we could actually, if I could ask him. You have anything to add for me?
No. Well, I know, I know. Back to his, he's interested in, yeah. Go any courses and have a conversation with them, so. Because he's been the one, I think he said something to you about it, too. Are, is this about that? Is everyone off the S snack?
No, yeah.
What's up?
I got a lot. I don't do all.
Oh, yeah, we can take some of those.
I'm not here. I'll keep one.
Yeah. Are we, in just a second, here upstairs? Stuff just accumulates.
Yeah.
Is there air up there yet or no?
Yeah.
Yeah, just coming up like that.
I'm not sure.
So, I don't know if anybody wants to.
Oh, geez. Oh, wow.
I wonder if it's that way.
There's.
Ted, are we expecting Ted? Yeah, he said he'd be here, let me find out where he is.
I thought the air situation was solved over there.
I didn't know, is it?
I thought it was, because the woman, she goes here all the week.
Ted call you about anything?
He didn't want to be away for vacation, did you?
This is bad today.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
He's coming.
Yeah, yeah.
Think he said he's running a red light, he'll be here in a minute? Mm-hmm.
He'll be here shortly, Jim.
Okay. He's on his way in.
He might have the shortest distance.
Sorry, Mayor.
We didn't start yet.
No problem. Yeah.
Were you upstairs?
He might be sitting on the arm of the chair, wasn't, no.
He just completely took it over.
I'm writing an offer at the same time. All this.
I'm like, oh, Scott.
We'll call the order to special council meeting, it's July 23rd at 12:30. Can we have the roll call, please?
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
We have two things on the agenda, but before we get started, in light of Mr. Noonan's resignation yesterday that we learned of, we thought it would be fitting to at least talk about what the charter says in, in expediting his replacement and maybe what some of those rules look like. So, I'm going to yield to our law director to explain exactly what the charter says and how that replacement process takes place.
Right, the Mahami Charter provides, whenever an office of a council member shall be vacant, the vacancy shall be filled by a majority vote of all of the remaining members of the council. In the event of a tie vote of the members of council upon such vacancy, the mayor shall not have the power to cast a vote to break such tie. If the vacancy shall not be filled by a vote of council within 30 days after the position becomes vacant, then the mayor shall fill the position by appointment, not subject to confirmation by council. The member of council so appointed shall fill the unexpired term of the council member they are replacing. If less than two years remain on the term being filled, and if more than two years remain on the member's term being filled, the appointee shall hold office until a successor is elected and qualified at the next general election for the remainder of the unexpired term. So, in this case, there's more than two years remaining on Scott Noonan's term, so the person appointed would need to run at the next general election.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, excuse me, I just had one other, I had something, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor. I had something to add to that, please. I researched this, I researched this topic, and here's what the past council has done. So, I want to read, and I just passed out a copy of this to all the council members. Advertise the positions on our website. When asked for short resuming, stating why you are interested in holding a seat on Mahami City Council, per our charter, you must be a resident and a qualified elector in the city of Mahami for no less than two years at the time of the appointment to council. Nominations, when a person is nominated, they will need a second to be considered. A council person may make nominations during the August 18th meeting. If more than three people are running, the first vote will reduce that number to two people unless one of them gets four votes. If this happens, that person will immediately take the seat after being sworn in. If the second vote is 3-3, then there's an impasse, the mayor will make the appointment by the 30th day of Noonan's registration. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, have a question as well?
Uh, yeah, let me just ask Mr. Barrow one thing, real quick. And, this was basically practice in, in many other appointments in the past.
Yes, yeah, the latest one was when Scott Noonan was appointed, before that, I believe, Tracy Elmore.
Okay.
This is the format they used.
Yeah. Mr. Lineback, yes?
Yes, um, now, as I understand, the charter doesn't say any of this, other than council's responsible, they have 30 days from, uh, two days ago, or whether it was yesterday. So, it's totally council's responsibility. This right here is not in the charter, correct? This is just a procedure that we've used?
That's what I, I.
That's a procedure that they followed in the past, or?
And I was told that it was adopted, as well.
It was adopted in, in what way, council president, was, is this in council rules or ordinance?
Well, it was adopted, and we can research that, but however, however, this is the format they had used in the past, and it had worked. This is what I put in before council.
I'm just a little concerned that scheduling the August 18th meeting, that leaves very little time on the 30-day clock, you know, for us to agree. Of course, you know, it could happen at that meeting, but if for some reason it doesn't, this is kind of, we, council gets one shot at it. I'm just wondering why we couldn't do something earlier?
Well, you.
Can we not do it at a special meeting?
Well, you, you have two arguments here. You're saying there's not enough time to do it, and can we do it at a special meeting quicker?
I, I would think that we could get this done in a week. Find out who the relevant candidates are, who have an interest, and have a chance to talk to them, if that's what we need to do, but.
But I don't know if that leaves enough time for the public to come forward, if those said people would like to go.
I think part of this was the advertising piece, and I think we were looking at, I don't know, maybe a week, to try to get it out there, so people that weren't here don't know what's going on, that they could get notified, but it's totally, it's totally up to you.
We don't want to push it through, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, we don't want to push this thing through, so let's give it some time, get people who may be interested, give them some time, they may be on vacation. Excuse me for interrupting, but.
No, that's fine. It's, it's your, it's your seat to fill. John has a, John has a.
I guess I have two questions. Does the fact that the filing deadline for the November election had passed change any of this? Like, how, what's that process for someone to then, because there would be, there could be multiple candidates for an unexpired term?
Right.
But the deadline for that election has already passed, so I don't know that.
I don't know if we know the answer to that, I think that's a BOE decision that.
It doesn't, one, it doesn't provide for a primary, so there could be 10 people run for the seat, and it would be at the next general election. A lot of that would be on the board of elections as to what election that is.
They, they like us right now, so I'm sure, that's. Second question would be, would it make sense to bring back the first normal meeting in August? Go back to the normal first and third? That gives, next week is too soon, I think, that gives us, what, two weeks from this past meeting? Plus, we wouldn't have to have any additional special meetings for anything else that may come up. I meant to bring that up on Monday, I apologize, but I forgot, and this seemed like the right time to, once again, address that.
In light of the fact that it was reduced to one in August, we could use that date for sure, but I still think it would be labeled a special meeting.
Okay.
At this, at this point.
Sure.
Right, yeah.
Alan, this is what was done in the past.
Excuse me, Ted, can you just move your, your mic?
Thank you.
The microphone, Mr. Kurt, yeah.
That Gabe gave us what was done in the past, but it's not, am I correct, it is not inconsistent with the charter, correct?
Right, I mean, it's just a method to come up with a candidate and to select one.
Since we didn't have anything to go with, I think Mr. Barrow said that, I'm going to research what was done in the past, and then say, this is what typically has been done in the past, but, again.
Yeah, my comment was just that, I think we can do this faster than the 18th, and I would like, like it to happen.
What was the?
I think these requirements about people expressing an interest, having a short resume, being a qualified elector in the city for no less than, you know, two years, seem reasonable, but let's just do it faster.
And I would, again, like to have it out there so the people, the city can, you know, we've heard for a long time, is there's no transparency, you do things behind closed doors. I think here it is, here's our time, here's our scheduled date of the meeting, and I just think it makes sense. A lot, a lot of people didn't even know that certain things at the Supreme Court level had happened, they just didn't know, they didn't hear about it.
Okay.
So, I would not, like, a certain citizen or two that may have had an interest in running, to have missed this, like, gosh, I didn't hear about it, gosh, that was quick. Excuse me, thank you, I'm done.
Can I get some clarification, please? So, I think it kind of relates to what John said, so, I guess, so clarification, what you were saying, Alan, because it sounds like, since there's more than two years, the person needs to be selected in the general election. So, what I was hearing, when John made one of his comments, and maybe this, I was just making this up in my head, is like, do you have to have signa, the signatures ready? Like, I guess I jumped to, it would make the most sense, we have eight candidates running for four seats in the general election. So, I mean, we already have eight candidates that have expressed interest in being on council. If there is a requirement for signatures, they've already met that requirement. So, I guess, two questions, I'm wondering, you know, if it makes sense to, you know, consider those eight candidates, but then the other question is, do they have to have signatures in for an election? And, and I guess, in this instance, it's, it's beyond when the signatures were due in June, so maybe that's not the case, but I just wanted to ask the question.
I.
No, they don't, they don't need any petition to be appointed.
Okay.
To simplify this, what's before council is an appointment. The procedure thereafter is not in our hands, it would be up to the board of elections to determine what, when, where, how, how that, how that's all going to flush out.
Whenever the next general election is that meets.
Right, and what they, and what they're going to require.
Oh, so that's what you mean by next general election, not the general election in November?
Correct.
We don't know that.
We don't know.
So, the next general election, wouldn't it be when Scott would have gotten reelected or not?
No, it'd probably be next November.
Again, the, what's before council is the procedure to appoint. What happens after that is really not in our wheelhouse.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I, and I just wanted to disseminate this information, so we were all on the same page, and seeing how things had worked and been done previously, that's why I did the research on it and passed it out. Thank you.
So, what's the pleasure, council?
Have a meeting August 1st, or whatever that day, that first Monday.
We can't, we, we can't vote on that today, it's not on the agenda, but that's certainly a discussion you can bring forth, you know. Okay?
For, for a special meeting, you're not able to make a motion to add something to the agenda and second and vote on it?
Uh, we can add it, we can add it to the agenda and make a motion for the meeting, it would need a five to vote.
Okay.
If there's, if that's your will.
We only have six people to vote.
Oh, five, one?
I mean.
Or four, one?
It would need a supermajority, which is five.
Supermajority.
It's five.
And that would be eight, August 4th, is the regular scheduled?
Mr. Fiskus recommended the original date, which I, what was it?
Sure, do you want me to make the motion, then?
Um, it's up to you.
Okay.
Could I have an opportunity to look at my schedule, because last time, when it was, we changed the schedule, I was on vacation.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would plan to be out of town that weekend.
That's the weekend.
This is August 4th.
I'm sorry, what date is that?
It'd be August.
Monday, August 4th.
Okay, thank you.
We could, we, we could still do a special meeting with date to be determined, or maybe that next week, or whatever, but, I mean, I, I think all council needs to, needs to come, for sure, it's pretty important. If you set a date, then we get, then that's the one we got to stick by.
Can we say the week of? That week? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I got something planned, but I can move it around with enough notice.
So, is, is Gabe checking now?
Gabe is checking, he's checking.
I'm just looking how many days, it's only, today's the 28th.
I brought a motion to accept a, a special meeting prior to the 18th date.
Okay, I will make a motion to add a special meeting prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
August 18th.
On August 18th.
Okay, that way we can get it out to all council and see what, what works, everybody.
I'll second that.
Second that, okay, we'll call the roll, five votes needed.
Barrow?
I had a question about this.
Yes, go ahead.
Are we voting to have, and it puts us on the agenda, then we're going to vote to?
Appoint.
Vote to. On the 4th?
No, at the next schedule, at the next special meeting, that's going to be determined.
Okay, but are we determining that meeting, that we're going to have that meeting today?
That's what that says.
Not the date, just that we will have it, yes. Prior to the 18th.
Yes, we're saying we want to have a vote for the 18th.
I understand what you're saying, Gabe, because we first talked about whether we were going to put it on the agenda or not. So, we're just voting now to have the vote to have a special meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Prior to the 18th.
Yes. So, we're just voting right now, Gabe, to, to say we want to vote a meeting prior to the 18th.
Or to add an agenda. Just want to, some math there, give me one second.
Okay.
I was hoping on it.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I, I seconded.
Okay, any other further discussion on that, or need clarification? All right, we'll call the roll.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Okay, so we will make a special meeting before the 18th for the purpose of appointment, okay? All right, now, our next order of business is executive session, we need a motion to go in executive session for personnel employment and or compensation of a public employer, employee or official. Need a motion and a second for that. Yes, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to go into executive session for personnel employment and or compensation of a public employee or official.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, call the roll, please.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Thank you.[1214.58]
Okay, we need a motion to come out of executive session. Yes?
I'll move to come out of executive session.
Second?
Thank you. We'll call the roll on that, please.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Linebacke?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Okay, as a result of the executive session, we do have a motion. Yes, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I moved to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Patrick Birch as to his anticipated retirement from the city of Ma'ami and authorizing terms of an agreement which has been provided to the law director to be entered into with Patrick Birch.
Second? And I would second that motion. Okay. And we'll call the roll on that, please.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Linebacke?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. And one more item that is kind of necessary moving forward is the pavement marking program that we typically do every fall. I thought it was important that we bring it to the special meetings because we kind of nailed down a contractor for the fall to get this done. So we expedited that. And so I do believe we got three bids on this? Was it, and this was?
Two.
Two, two bids? Okay. And this was the lowest and best bid for that?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay. We need a motion to approve this. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor or his designee to enter into a contract with American Roadway Logistics LLC in the amount of $287,722.57 for the 2025 pavement marking program.
I'll second that motion. Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion on that? Then we'll call the roll.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Linebacke?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
And then a motion to adjourn what I believe is going to be a special meeting that yet to be decided. Yes.
I make that motion that we adjourn until the next special meeting is scheduled.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Wait, who seconded that?
Oh, Harris. We'll call the roll on that, please.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Linebacke?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Thank you all. Have a good day.